The insurance company insured those roofs as they were. Okay, and if they can't go in there and say on COVID, if they can't go in there and repair the hail damage which was caused by this storm in and of itself by themselves, then they gotta replace it. If there's incidental damage that is part of that from previous hailstorm, they're replacing that as part of their claim. But I don't think you can sit there and pick at it. I don't see that.
From a living's perspective, that sounds commonsensical what he's articulated here. But from Tac's perspective, is that plausible enough or something that you could, from what you've heard, is something that we might be able to grab on from what happened?
No, everything he says is correct. The thing that the policy reads that it's repair or replacement without a cosmetic exclusion. Repair or replacement, back to the position you were before the storm. So if there's a repair that gets you back to the place you were before the storm, then that's the least they're gonna pay. That's the amount they're gonna pay. If they can't do that, if they can't get you back substantially to the place you were before the storm, then you gotta replace the whole thing. So...
And so Steve, with what you've heard this morning, and you may have said this, I may just be looking for confirmation of the process of what we've gone through to date and the opinions to date on the property, the documentation that we have to date specifically on the 2013 storm. Is your recommendation to go through this, to ask for a contrary opinion and then proceed forth with the appraisal process? Because I feel like that's implied, if Tri-State will go out and get another opinion, it's implied that the next step would be the county would proceed forward with the appraisal process.
Well, you know, we're all assuming that there will be a difference in this next engineering report, which we anticipate. If it's not, then, you know, all bets are off. We table what we have. But if it is different, then we would start the negotiating process, you know. That, you know, basically Tac has a report that says that the roofs aren't damaged enough to replace them. We have a report that says, we do, that the issue is that Potter County would have to champion that report and review the other report. We couldn't have Tri-State Fair, you know, we can't have a tenant, so to speak, fighting on our behalf. Potter County has to take that.
So if you want to have to champion the Tri-State Fair's report, then we'll come back to that.
We're the insurer. Potter County is the insurer, not Tri-State Fair. So...
Which is contrary to what Mike is indicating to us, that in his, in terms of scope of what you know on the property, you can't champion that. You can't champion that as a recommendation to the court.
It's a recommendation already.
I'm just trying to reaffirm it, because I know we've had a lot of discussion this morning.
You mentioned one of the options as far as, and I'm not sure if that's legal or not, as far as giving the money to Tri-State Fair and having them repair versus we doing repairs. Is that appropriate?
I think you can do that. You can.
But again, the monies we're talking about is still $200,000. So...
Touch what the damage is repaired and if you done.
It's just a man thing.
The challenge if you do that, and that's certainly an option, but the challenge then becomes, I mean, as long as Tac will continue to insure those buildings, they know what they've got. They're on it. So going forward, if it were ever thrown off on the fairgrounds to try to buy insurance on those buildings, it would be very difficult to go insure those roofs in the condition they're in and with the damage that's up there.
Yeah, that's, that would be a challenge.
Yeah, I think that's been a root question, again, the court maybe has had in some form or fashion of, why are we even insuring those to begin with? And I think there might have been differing opinions, which is kind of this partial model that we see on the venue district that's currently insured by the Tri-State, the other property insured by the county. This kind of mixture is bringing us to where we are today. But the root of the question is, is there real value for Potter County? I understand there is from a dollar savings, yes, absolutely, to Tri-State for us because we are a bigger entity. We have bigger property values underneath our umbrella. But really, the root and kind of common sense question is, should we?
Yeah, I think that's another question.
On the matter of this question, anyone else from the court?
I just, to me, let's resolve it. Let's get another opinion. Let Tri-State do the process and see what happens from that opinion.
Understanding that by doing that, you'll develop what, you'll process with back to all square one?
Well, that's certainly a possibility. But the other possibility is that the next opinion might agree with the opinion during the presentation.
I agree with that. I think we need to exhaust our landlord agenda and then see where it falls. But either way, it's gonna probably cost us much money. We can't right now re-insure, so we've gotta take care of it somehow.
I certainly agree with Mike.
Yeah, I think that's not a difference at all. You're not gonna hurt my opinion if you go get another, or it won't be the first time. We'll get the report back and look at your thing, but I will stand my decision maker.
I would never want you to have any issues with your attorney.
We do think the other alternative is to replace the roofs.
Oh, no, let's not have that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Now, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate here a bit. And, I mean, is this gonna affect our county's ability to get insurance? I mean, does it affect our relationship with Tac? I mean, I don't, the court can certainly do what it wants to, but so one thing that's kind of concerned me is, you know, the more we argue about this with Tac, the less they get. I mean, does that affect our relationship?
We have good rates, but the most are.
Well, yeah, your rate is a 5.8 cent rate right now, which is, which is as cheap as it gets with a $25,000 cost of order deductible, which is, you know, is unbelievable rate and deductible. You know, my, if the report comes back and, you know, it needs to be clear. It needs to be clear if there's any opinion, but it suggests that they, you know, there could be damage out to replace the roof from the storm. You know, and then we kind of force Tac again to pay an additional million and a half dollars. It absolutely will affect us, you know, and there's no, there's no question that it will affect us. So to what extent, I don't know. I don't know. You know, I'm presenting the renewal on all the casualty this morning from Tac. And then it's basically flat, you know, it's flat rate renewal. Even after the storm, they didn't, they didn't adjust us up, even though they've already paid a couple million dollars. But that was in July. And so that's still, you know, that's still coming. So, you know, it absolutely could affect us to what extent, you know, I don't know. We're already affected because of what, you know, what has been paid out. So, you know, to get another opinion, you know, I think, you know, might not be a bad idea. The issue is, it's in Tri-State Fair, five or $6,000. And if it's not clear, if it's a, if it's a report that kind of walks the line, that's when we're gonna have, that's when we're gonna be in the one. That's when we're gonna be in a position now, how hard do we push? How hard do, you know, do we go to appraisal? Do we go to, do we go to the legal process? You know, which are all available to us, you know, to go and to push, to push to get this done. You know, so there's just a lot of unknowns, a lot of unknowns.
Well, and I think to your point, Commissioner, and to your Commissioner Church's exhausting all means and certainly if the Tri-State would like to take another opinion. But the challenge then is, once the opinion comes back. What I personally don't want this court to kind of get tied into is that we would automatically take that differing opinion without another discussion and debate. Really, a big picture, is this the right thing for Potter County and all of its property? And that we certainly would hear the recommendation and be mindful of it and not dismiss it. But I think as we've seen this morning, there's lots of perspectives at the table under the big umbrella, if you will. And I think that kind of really speaks to your point to say, let's go, let's exhaust all means. Yeah, however, to be very clear to Tri-State is that the implication is that we will hear the information and really start to vet out internally and make an open court. I mean, it's always start to vet out if this is the right direction for the county.
Obviously, we'll get another opinion.
Yes.
Just a matter of, as Steve is indicating, if it's gonna be clear in Tac's perspective, whether or not we would get any approval there.
We could certainly reevaluate our position at that time. We haven't made a revision on any of that.
Okay, Steve, just to be clear, particularly the, you go about allowing or appealing the opinion. Where are we in all of it? And if it doesn't come back clear, smoking them clear, that then move toward their favor. And what they've already been discussing. Map out the scenarios for a discussion with this court. We'll, you can do that for me as far as where our arguments would be as far as going on with this process or reverting back to what Tac is recommending.
Depending on what the report says, you know. But if it leans more towards replacement, I think that we would just provide that report to Tac and say, you know, and request them to reevaluate based on this report. They may, you know, they may fold their cards and say, okay, we'll replace them all at that point. Based on what you're pointing to. That, you know, that might be their answer. They might say, no, we're sticking with our evidence. We, you know, this, we have this evidence. It says this, we're stated to it. And then at that point, then it's back to our court to decide whether we want to go to appraisal or not.
I have a Jerry question. The report comes back and it is the same as Mike has reported and all the other entities have reported. What are you, what are you gonna do then?
I would have to have a board meeting discussed. My first information is that we would, following this next recommendation, you could come to you all and ask for help in replacing those roofs. Because you all own those buildings. I mean, I think we ought to understand where the guardians are taking care of those properties and those facilities.
And that's a matter of different, for you all then, of discussion. We need to get into that with this particular question, but I think that would be helpful.
And I would certainly agree with Commissioner Vaughn's statement. That is kind of where the difference of opinion is. And correctly, if I'm wrong, that contract in the language, it speaks to this dollar a year, but the upkeep would occur on the Tri-State side of the house in repair. And also, if I remember correctly, there's not an end date on that contract.
I think there actually is.
Is it 2020?
I think it's 2020.
Yeah.
2020, 29th of December. I didn't think of that as...
That's right, but there is a term.
And that's right. I think Mr. Hitz apparently weighs all these things. It's been extremely fair in saying that the payers over the time, the whole time they're out there and properly done right to each step. We try to do that as well as carrying down those other, those buildings that were not safe for longer. We've done all those kinds of things. With our money, with the money our payer is supposed to come from, you know.
And I'd say that would be the appropriate direction.
I think that's appropriate to go with, again, not for this particular issue.
Okay.
So, can I ask one, as part of the process that we're gonna go through as a fair in getting this engineer, can we make sure that that engineer also looks at Kimball 1, Kimball 2 and the warehouse? Since those are currently under your policy. I mean, we might as well go ahead and look at, instead of just looking at the three that they've looked at and that they've actually adjusted, I mean, why would you not look at all of them? Is there a problem?
We didn't look at that.
Yeah, they have not, they have been...
Do we want someone else to look at it before we look at it? Or do we want that process to be in place at this?
I can look at those buildings. We bring Tac in to look at them. We have never, I've never been on top of Kimball. The old building at 30 Grand, we used to maintain it.
They are all in policy. And we didn't want it included in the...
Kimball 1 and 2 and opposite there.
The warehouse. The warehouse. And 82.
Right. Those were all on the policy. They were not, they were claimed.
We looked at the three, but we did not, did not allow.
And those three they did not include in the plan.
Why was that?
The condition of the roof. Oh, we're not running, but there was nothing there too.
And the Kimball 1 and 2?
No, they were on the rest.
Yeah, but the Kimball 1 and 2 are not all in the...
Never had, never been on those.
Yeah, I think just my only hesitancy on that is to kind of muddy the waters. I'm not sure if they can, whomever will go out, whichever engineering company will go out to give us a very kind of, to Steve's point, clear and concise with the claims at hand and to really be able to compare apples to apples versus having other...
Yeah, and I think Mike is not doing that. I think that likely in that sense, we might want to look at that as far as separate.
You can do that.
Yeah, but we look at the Kimball, the maintenance farm, whatever you call it now.
The Kimball 1 and 2.
Yes, Kimball 1 and 2, maintenance farm.
Do you know why they were not included in the...
I, before I got involved, I cannot tell you what, going three years they're out there. I'm just told to go look at these things.
Well, what we can do on, in hiring our engineer, we can add and give to, you know, give a separate report on the addressing warrant we currently discuss and another one while he's out there. I mean, I don't think it's gonna cost us a significant amount more for the fairgrounds to do while he's out there to look at those, but it sure costs more for that to come back and do it. If the original appraisers come, appraisers from Tac come back, similar to what we've already seen.
And Tac did not look at the food report. Mr. Jenner, the engineer, went to further request through Tac to look at why. Or you wouldn't have to make it up.
A move we table this issue and allow Tri-State Fairgrounds to hire their appraiser and then bring it back when that's done.
I'll second.
Okay, you can ask a quick question before we go if you don't want. Does Tri-State need our approval to do that? That's on their own dollar. I'm confused. Other than we've recognized and discussed it.
No, I think all you're saying is table it.
We're just gonna table it. We won't need to vote on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Allow us to allow us to give it in.
Oh, no, absolutely. I just wanna make sure whether they need our permission for their own physical expenses.
All right, so take it.
Okay, so are we...
No, we're just taking it.
Okay, we can move on. Okay, thank you.
We're gonna thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mike and Steve.
Commissioner is saying that we need to vote it legally.
Well, we have a motion.
For table?
You're just, you're his second. You may need to...
You table it, you vote it, do that, but just... I'm just asking you just to have no action.
Our part of the procedure is...
Okay.
Well, we say it, Commissioner. We think we're...
Let's put it on the clarity.
Oh, yeah, we have a motion to withdraw, Commissioner. Is that, is that correct, Julie, a motion to withdraw? If we're taking it, I would take it.
Okay, I have a motion to table the issue and allow the Tri-State Fairgrounds to hire their appraiser and bring it back to the court.
Can we do that as far as that statement? As far as the second part of it?
That's cool. I mean, if you're gonna table it, then it should take no action, so it seems to be provided too. And you're taking just no observation, but I don't think it really, I mean, I think...
That's not what I'm saying to you. It's just when you table a motion, you table it until, until a later time. That's all that's all we need.
Okay, state the motion on the floor.
I mean, I just have a... The motion on the floor is motion to table the issue and...
No, no, no. That was initial.
That was, that was your initial. He said a motion to table, yes, sir.
Yes, he said, he said motion to table.
I hope it was, uh...
No, it's Commissioner Church made the motion and Commissioner Kelly seconded it.
So, if he re-throwed his second, then it dies of the like second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So there's no longer a motion, but it died of the like second. Right.
Now?
Now we can proceed with the county business.
Part of the position. Okay. So, I'm putting a bid pass by that for number... I have a 12 formal bid, number 1087-14, painting and refinishing services. To consider acting upon the following, aid to allow opening of a single bid, opening of a single bid, need to avoid the contract or a single bid dependent on the review and approval by the facility maintenance department.
We put a formal bid to get a painting contractor, kind of like we do with electrical maintenance and plumbing, so that we might identify projects with a JL identified project, such as the Santa Fe or English plaster following now that they've prepared. We could just call it knowing that the dollar amount we spend on it every year without being up to a formal bid for every single project we put out. Within that bid, we did ask for some pretty stringent requirements, such as they have to have a certification on environmental to dispose of things, as well as a history of working on a storage building because they're gonna be working in this building and that building. Because of that, we did only receive one bid. And the policy put on my office is when we get one bid, to bring it to us in court to ask permission to open that single bid. And so that's why I'm asking you with N.A. to let me open that and then I'll give it to Mike and if we can come back to me maybe at the end of the meeting and if Mike is in agreement with the pressing, anybody sees it, I have to go ahead and afford that bid.
So you just need approval to open?
I need approval to open. That's what the issue is.
I make a motion that we allow the approval of single bid, number 1087-14.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, motion in second to allow the opening of the bid so stated. I'll move favor to your hands. Okay, this is for you. Okay.
And then David, to your point, we'll come back to I.D.'s settlement.
I have a 13, land donation. To consider acting upon acceptance of a land donation from Krista Ministries.
Did anyone hear from... No, there's not. I have this company contact me about two weeks ago. They're out of, the law firm was in Utah, but I believe the company's actually in Washington. And they received this property a number of years ago as a donation from a deceased person. They just don't want it anymore and they didn't know who else to give it to. So I've given you their letter. I don't have a recommendation whether you take it or not.
And the land location is...
I've put a couple maps in there as well as a letter from the organization outlining the date which we're due to. It's northeast of town, off of Bell Ranch, a road, I believe, it's right north of it. The property value is about $200 and if you took it, it would lose $3 to you at Tac. So I'm reading the appraisal right.
And put a fire station out there.
But it is a quarter and acre. It's not a big piece of property and it's just, it's flat and usually, there's no structure.
What is it connected to, is it connected to any of our property or is it...
There's other lots around. It's an undeveloped, it looks like it was developed to be attractive homes and there's, there's just...
Is it within city?
No, Bell Ranch was not.
No, it's not. Pretty much a year. I'd say we keep it, but we ought to get rid of the salad.
It can certainly sell. I don't know if it'd be worth the topic salad.
I'll look at $30 and make a profit.
Yeah, if that's what you want, want me to do, we'll accept it and I can turn around and sell it after.
Do you like that?
I move that on, please.
I'm moving accept the land donation from Krista Ministries and the legal description. We can just pull that off of the paperwork. And then I would add to that, return it and try to sell it.
Thank you. Yeah, I do. Motion on the floor, it's been seconded to accept the donated land from Krista Ministries and at a time that is proven to seem to settle. I'll move favor to your hands. Okay, this is for you. Okay, I have 14 insurance premiums to hear report on insurance premiums for the period of May 1st, 2014 through April 30th, 2015 from insurance agency ballot to recognize and sort of approve payment of invoices.
The original of the insurance is, the casualty insurance is on April 30th. That includes general liability, law enforcement liability, auto liability, public officials liability, our prime policy and retain collusion liability, hopefully, the 30th of April. And we can see the premiums are very consistent. For last year, we have six additional vehicles when we're comparing with last year at this time. Total, had the premiums of about $2,500. Although the premium's very per line, given the six additional vehicles, it's very stable. I'll be back in June with a presentation on the property premium. That's the one that we have some more to it to. And cyber liability as well, that's renewed in July. So I was, I was very pleased with Tac's proposal. Again, the fact that, you know, I thought it would ease some of the property pain with an increase in that inside, but they really did not. They kept it locked, so...
David, just a follow-up question on the fleet increase, the six vehicles, what, where are those six vehicles at?
So that's a, that's a product of the process of auctioning off vehicles versus getting new vehicles. And so the snapshot that was taken whenever we got this renewal, we have just received new vehicles for the departments and we're in the process of transitioning them over to give to us in the auction so we can sell them off. As well as if they were big enough to filter down to the departments, which I have a request next. I mean, there's a certain time period of four to five months we have to keep those old vehicles so they can be sold. So this is just having to fall as a snapshot of vehicles from where that transition came from.
So just a timing?
Yeah. I want to go back to how many it's not, stay up in states.
Okay. And then do we expect, just due to the sheer timing of our budget and how this actually occurs, do we expect that year to year to have a similar snapshot like this, to have a similar timing issue next year?
It really just depends on when those new vehicles come in. So if we buy them straight from a dealership that has been stocked and, oh, I mean, we can clear it all out in January with this thing up, it's really a product of just how, how the people purchase the challenge.
Any more questions? Okay, void is so recognized and you're gonna take a motion to approve of payments of him both.
So?
Second.
Please, second.
I do. Okay, all of the favor, show hands. Ask us for new, thanks, get you all ready. I have 15 vehicle transfers and to consider acting upon the transfer of vehicles between various departments.
You have a spreadsheet in front of you that shows the permissions I'm asking to transfer vehicles. What these, these new vehicles, they're not new to the county. They're just new as available to transfer out. These are vehicles that were being replaced by the new 2013, 2014, we just got in. So the district attorney, a couple of their vehicles aren't running and they haven't received new vehicles in the last three or four years for this process. So that's why they're getting such a big call for this. The county attorney had a wrecked vehicle that they never replaced, and so that's what we're asking for. Information technology about a year ago, I don't know if you remember as a court, their expedition went out and we... Information technology about a year ago, I don't know if you remember as a court, their, their expedition went out and we gave them a crown baby and so since then we had something else to replace with. And then purchasing, we're actually asking for this escape, uh, because it's a hybrid of food, better gas mileage. It's for our mailroom vehicles here today, so hopefully that'll churn our budget out.
And the ones that are listed as old vehicles now, we going to?
I'll, I'll try to sell them unless another department comes in and it looks out and it sounds like they want to replace them.
All of them, all of them, or is that just the?
I, I think all of them, but, but one, uh, one of them is the district attorney's. It's not a, for others. They all drive whether they'll get you from here to, to the, to the.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve the transfer of vehicles?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor, second to approve the transfer of vehicles between various departments. Those in favor, show your hands. Pass this for you. Item sixteen, equipment purchases, uh, considering upon purchasing a, a microfilm reader scanner from professional document system in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. Funds budgeted into two thousand thirteen, so like fourteen fiscal budget year. Item B, two August thermal imaging cameras from Dacko Fire Equipment in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. These funds are also budgeted for the thirteen, fourteen fiscal, uh, budget, fiscal budget year.
Kerry may have to correct me. I don't know that the funds are specifically budgeted for the cameras for the fire station, but they do have funds that they're wanting to transfer.
Okay, got it, okay.
And the need for those thermal imaging cameras?
I was here, uh.
And he's left, yeah, and he had a call.
They do, and, uh, obviously, I've been waiting for some of them, at least two of them, which is back in two thousand and thirteen, maybe. So they just.
Structural fires, fine, audience. Okay.
The, the microfilm reader, I'm not sure if there's a software that comes with that. Are there maintenance fees?
There is. It's five hundred, maybe three eighty, uh, a year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. And, um, what account, what line item in the budget will that come from?
That's coming out of my record.
Your record?
Yes, that was something I'm pretty little, last bit, so I'm just.
And how does this work with your Tyler software?
It doesn't actually. This is actually for our court records side because we're unable, you know, either, either the file is in our office or we have to go to film to look at, to look at information on files. And this is really more something more for the public so they have an easier access to it because our, the one that we continue, or the one that we have continues to break down and we're going to get parts for it. So this is basically, but there is software on there that, our additional feature that will allow us to enter some of those, return all of the images in the PDF. And so in the event we get a case management system, then we would be able to possibly use that to export some of those images, you know, to get.
But you would still need the physical machine?
Um, yes, okay, yes.
Okay. Take, uh, both A and B. Uh, it's all right. Okay, item sixteen is the, a motion to act upon the consideration of both A and B.
To, to transfer.
For the transfer necessary.
I'll second that. Get all that through me?
Yes.
All right. Those in favor, show your hands. Pass this for you. Thank you. Item seventeen, structural engineering, to consider and act upon avoiding a contract to the neighbors and associates engineering with a not, with a not to exceed price of nineteen thousand six hundred dollars to evaluate the structural integrity of the Santa Fe building as it relates to elevator modernization project. Contrary to exemption from competitive bidding as a professional service.
I'll explain the, uh, kind of scope word and then David presenting the proposal. Uh, this is part of the modernization that I addressed with y'all. Uh, we have brought in Rick Rollit. He's the, uh, North American Elevator Consultant Contractor. He is going to be doing his first base work. Uh, George Abrahamson, the structural engineer, we're going to need him as well for the first base and clerk of scope. As well, eventually will be needing more electric for the electrical side. Uh, I've given you a handout right there to kinda explain my schedule of values, how to establish this. Uh, the forty-nine thousand nine hundred originally for North American Elevator, uh, that has been broken down. I'm only estimating we need fifteen thousand of that between now and the end of this fiscal year. The, uh, same way with the, uh, George Abrahamson, what we're asking today for you to prove, just like to deal with the North American, is to prove the full value. Uh, but I'm only going to utilize ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars of, out of this current fiscal year. The nine thousand two hundred and forty for scope two, I'll put in my budget for the upcoming year. So each one of these three different tasks will have another, will have the remaining funds that we presented to put in next year. So we'll just utilize a part of it, but we do ask that you please approve the full amount, the, the nineteen thousand six hundred value.
Yeah, and, uh, the, the scope of work, um, the thing within your packet was Mike actually generated that of what the architect would be different. What's an engineer be doing? And, uh, George Abrahamson, Davis and his fees, uh, Mike thought he was very qualified to do the project. And as for my bid, bid rules, I can't go out for quotes from different people here. We'd have to get the most qualified and get that price and decide.
This firm has done a lot of work with them throughout the past, uh, some of their most recent moments was at, uh, the district court sheriff department project. Then all the surveying out of the fairgrounds, so previous to that and other issues that has involved agency explosion we had in the San Fay building. And we had our, had our researcher program over there, so they're a very, very qualified company and I would highly recommend them. Just real quick, out in the elevator room, we have motors up there, probably from Major Commissioner Church, wrong, and here it is, right, these are humongous motors. We're going to remove them. We're reducing the weight, but the footprint of where that plate is up there has changed. It's now become smaller. So we need a structural engineer to be involved to help displace the weight of that equipment. But scope two work that we involved in, they will be our eyes and ears, just like an architect would, and engineers we have on this project, to make sure that the, uh, elevator contractors that have been a modernization follows all the requirements that they are set.
In that move, we abort the contract to Abrahamson and associates engineering not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred to evaluate the structural integrity of the Santa Fe building in regards to the elevator modernization project.
Second, um, just a quick discussion point on page eleven of eleven, David, the last page of this document, the expenses add in them to the agreement. Is this our counter back to them or their counter to us?
This is ours, still.
Ours to them, okay. I think that's helpful. I don't know, but I've seen that.
Yeah, I, I can't, I forgot where I got this.
Yeah, that's, that's why we have that, if they're limited up.
Motion on the floor to, uh, accept and second, those in favor. Pass this for you. Item nineteen, the employment issues, to consider acting upon the following employment items, road and bridge. The employment of Dakota Rattler seasonal maintenance tank affected April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B, road and bridge, the employment of Ted Moody, summer war affected April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Make a motion that we accept the employment items as presented.
Thank you. Okay, motion to accept the employment item as presented, those in favor, show your hands. Pass this for you.
Is that Commissioner Church that seconded?
Item twenty, uh, county commissioner, continuing education, is to recognize, Commissioner? Yes. Education certificate, uh, completion from county judge and commissioners association takes pursuant to section nine one dot zero 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 two five, the local government code. So, recognize. Item twenty-one, tax office sell property, to consider acting upon a request from the tax successor collector to sell multiple properties in private sale. This one.
I have to think of the, I always have it on me right now. Okay, I move that we, we, is that, I don't have my name, but, 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 uh, head rose is that? Again. Thirty-six seventeen.
Thirty-six twenty.
See, uh, on the second page, it went to thirty-six seven.
Yeah, that's my first, so many good. It looks across the street.
Okay.
The actual property is thirty-six twenty.
Thirty-six twenty, okay. Good then.
Uh, I mean, we move that accept the sale of property in private sale.
Second.
Okay, so move and second to accept the sale of property in private sale, those in favor, show your hands. Pass this for you. Uh, county product.
Well, Mike, are you tired this morning?
You're, 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 you're.
Feel like you're in the county jerk, don't you?
My, Andy.
The project, uh, I've, David, I presented to you at this time, uh, the Texas Historic Mission T A C project. Uh, of course, item number one, we kinda put in on how the courthouse area runs to the time of year until we get back. You think we spent a lot of time on the, on. The, uh, item number two, courtroom acoustical project, uh, we, all we lack in this project is this room right here. We will be starting bid tonight, tomorrow night, looking at acoustical panels here in all the areas of the building that have been completed. I'll be performing a punch list with Purdue Acoustics here in about a week and, uh, I've already found issues that will come in different correction. And there are projects still waiting on the manufacturer to get the part produced.
Uh, Mike, any acoustic panels? Have you heard any feedback?
I heard, I heard it's helped, uh, Feller heard one, uh, he made a compliment on it, had definitely helped it in the courtroom. Uh, I've not heard of anybody else, but. The, uh, second category, uh, the courthouse preservation base three, outstanding warranty claims, uh, I don't know where we stand locally with journeyman, but to make you aware, I want this to come on the record. We've had local contractors that I've been working with for the directions of the court. Uh, we have completed, out of four of the claims that they locals was responsible for, we completed three of them last week. We have one claim that's still currently being right now, uh, with, uh, construction, uh, tech, tech America is currently working on it. Uh, Palmer painting and Skycam Mechanical has completed, those other items I just want the court to be made aware of that. I think we're down to five items right now, who else?
I was just gonna ask a follow-up question. So at the expense of food, um, if this is during the outstanding.
These are claims that they were still responsible for, journeyman never knows about, on those items. Out of, one of the claims your journeyman disperformed, I mean, I'm sorry, that Palmer painting disperformed, they were not responsible for it, but they would be involved in it at the end of the correction, correction action or somebody else. Uh, Tony's father, Palmer painting, when Mike gets on the best porch, I don't think it's associated with it. I'll take care of it because he didn't want to do it there. So he took the, he, he spent nearly three days up there with his crews doing something that he would eventually have had to done, but not all the work was since long. Uh, out of that, uh, we, we definitely are going to need journeyman to be involved on these remaining claims. So the desk you're sitting at, that's one of the biggest, biggest values that are right here, giving this stuff replaced, uh, David, have you heard anything?
We, we given, we made a claim on the, uh, performance alarm. Yeah, I've got notice back on the journeyman. They received the notice and wait for, uh, uh, notice back from the body.
And we added timeframe, hopefully by the next quarter.
I've gotta wait, yeah, I've gotta wait for notice to go up. Give me a time to respond if I don't have more comments.
Okay. Next category, the Santa Fe ship project, just to make the reference down with that. Uh, the bids will be broad, the bids are due actually, I believe, it's tomorrow on the fifteenth of the twenty-eighth. David will make the recommendation to the commissioners' court and I will be hoping to see from there. The, uh, modernization, I'm going to ask you to go back to the handout that I've given y'all regarding this financial, uh, schedule right there. I need you to make a change, y'all. I made an error. On this particular page right here, it shows a schedule of values to give. Under, uh, George Abrahamson, the second asterisk right there on scope two, that value needs to say nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Of course, it's nineteen.
Nine thousand, what was it again?
Nine, nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay.
And on your second page, under the same category, task two, uh, what else? Under, George Abrahamson, next to last page, there once again, those two totals there on the college object, seeing in the starting office, needs to reflect the change, nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The, uh, hail damage emergency projects that were currently involved in, just to make you aware of, here we see the application. The roof I rejected at the Santa Fe building the other day was a lower portion, uh, thirteen. The, uh, G A S, the manufacturers come back, they will replace every recharge product, because we want to know whether like, or the red fog, it's actually, it was a part of the material that they were using and the glue adhesive had not appeared during that attempt, so they will replace.
What's that gonna cost then to replace? So, how can we care?
Uh. At, here, up here. Eight, eight, nine, sixty-seven.
So they're replacing the, the, all the material?
All the material except the walls. They're replacing the field area that you walk on, uh, they put it down within a day, started looking at it, we just had wrinkles on it, you couldn't walk on. So we brought, gave it off to, we brought in their manufacturers, their inspectors lived there and they went back and their final determination was that they're at fault.
Well, in some companies, we have to do it.
That company didn't call that so true. Uh, the sheriff's department project, uh, right now we're currently ninety-eight percent, uh, clean on net. Uh, this kinda ties it back into the, uh, program that we're doing with Exfil. I need to get Exfil involved here before we complete these projects. The, uh, May twenty-third, uh, the non-emergency projects, I'm currently working on to establish these documents with David, just to give you a heads up on item number eight, the fairgrounds. Uh, Commissioner McGee and I met the other day with them out there. I started to make work on further direction of what they'd like to see out there. Eventually I'll have that with the poly scope work turned over today to get the cost from that, just to back to cool. Here's a good one, correctional center, emergency waistline project, ninety-nine percent. We hope to finish that by this round. Uh, I've also given you a schedule of values on the financial costs that we're currently standing on that project. I'd estimate three hundred fifty-five thousand. Currently, right now, we, uh, have a balance of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, I'm expected to return around six thousand off of that back. Then. Fire station three, I really don't have anything to report on it at this time. Y'all have anything?
I guess we can have it, exactly.
Well, I'll make a discussion at the next, okay, at the next.
Y'all have made some requests of just bringing information. And then I will add the two Excel programs to the list.
That would be interesting to see how that shakes out, Mike. Uh, that's probably something to really highlight with the county if we can successfully do that and start to get, um, to the bank.
When you start pursuing these, Commissioner Kelly, we didn't know the. When you start our students, Commissioner Kelly, we need to handle problems.
David, David, I think along, uh, the projects, uh, was the, the materials was executive session. If we already are in a, for partnership with entity with properties and we want to discuss that going forward.
This is like a, it's hard to get, hard to get those type of issues into executive session because you don't really have any, you don't have any negotiation between the two parties going on. I mean, in certain situations, you're supposed to kind of be a negotiation contract basis for, say, purchase through a property, for, where do you, where do you want to keep? Your thoughts to yourself or negotiation purposes, but if there's already a relationship between the parties, it's really hard to get that into.
Want to go back to that?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, yes. No, it's not sixteen, it's twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve B, yes, yes.
That's to award, that's under the form of B, training and surfacing, uh, surface refinishing services. Item B was to award the contract to the single bidder, continued to be revealed and approved by the facility maintenance informant. We already allowed the, uh, whole of the vehicles.
The, uh, the company that responded was Palmer painting company and they, they have a list of value, I, I can pass it around the field, I can see it, of the rates they're going to be charging us. My, is this fair?
I think that what they have presented, there's not really a means out there to establish something to stop, uh, scope work or contractors. We have utilized many contractors throughout the years, so right now currently, I do not have the staff and manpower. I mean, I was hired at a powder campus, but it, it all were construction, painting, remodeling, but we just, we can't find the caliber of person out there anymore, plus they need to be somebody that is, uh, mind, minds, mindful of the historic buildings that we have. Currently right now, I've got these projects pending, waiting till we can get a contractor of. The San Fe fire stair tower, thirteen floor, San Fe, West building design, emergency generator, that is just due to the hail damage that we received, I've got to get a contractor in. Uh, get that one done. A project I brought to you a while back was the San Fe fire station a few years ago, uh, this is a contractor, knowing that the cost comes in, uh, within my own burla hall, and we hope to proceed forth with that. And then, and y'all very well aware of San Fe though, we've got a lot of plaster issues over, painting issues over there that needs to be addressed, so those are some of the projects.
Uh, Mike, just a follow up question to that is, um, is this, is this expense, this will be an additional expense, or are you using other contractors? Or is this typically been staff, internal, has your internal team been?
It's been a measure of, back whenever I did it years ago, I did a majority of the work. Currently right now, it's probably been six, seven years since my staff's done it. We just do not have the caliber of people, it's hard to find somebody to come in and wants to, uh, that wants to do the detail work that we require here at the county. San Fe building, I started, uh, my staff, they did the labor work of finding all the damaged areas in the building, the plaster was falling, cracking. I've just been waiting to bring someone on to do this type of work. The last time we've done something of this type, uh, we brought in, we actually went out with it, San Fe, uh, third, fourth floors. Fourth floor, we left it all after that project, we brought in a local painting contractor, he got ready for the temporary, you know, pitch still.
I'm just, um, thinking through the expenses and so if, if traditionally, that, you know, that's kind of the root of the question, and traditionally it's been our internal team that's taking care of that painting work. I mean, then now we're using a contractor to do that, how that will affect your budget?
Well, we, well, we haven't done all the projects, currently what you have right now that needs to be done, insurance covers.
Right, yeah, but, but I'm talking about.
I will, I will present those projects to you at budget.
Okay.
You know, like I did last time, San Fe building has your grocery list, all things.
But this, this project is insurance. Did you work on it in this?
No, not just this, they'll be, not just for the maintenance part, they'll be for the sheriff's department, road and bridge, fire department, they're like our latest contract. We have somebody already approved.
You worked with him before, are you satisfied?
Yes, so the company that did that and wanted to do the store work on this building, once also did the historic painting and the gentleman associated with another company, he did the historic painting on the same. Very qualified company.
Did you make a decision on that?
Motion to approve of, uh, accepting the contractors, uh, to move forward with the, uh, project program. Yes, that's all.
Second.
So we moved to second. While this.
Oh, okay, right. Mr. Church made a.
We moved to second to accept the contract of the, uh, those in favor, show hands, that's a four zero. Okay, item number, um, number eight, item twenty-two. We need to, we're, we need various questions on that, executive session, we are not having any, we've got a, uh, several numbers here somewhere. Uh, the number being made is, uh, cost rate is five hundred and thirty-nine, eighty-eight of those females, eight of those females are insurers. Okay, any, uh, insurance items come forward for them? Uh, any just items, um, note that would come forward?
Since it wasn't on the agenda this time, I will bring, make sure it is next time, the sharing and donation. Before your donation, it's five thousand dollars. We also need to bring to account the tiered board members, that needs to be on the next agenda. Do we have any, uh, any, uh, there's, this, this, I have a couple, uh, and I think, I don't know if anybody else. And there are two that we're looking at.
Need two and probably a.
And I have drafted a thank you letter for Mrs. Autry and Mr. Heathel, and I'll bring that to the next court so everyone can sign that or there's some, it's on the court.
Okay, did we have to come forward? So you can hear me now, court stands adjourned at eleven forty-three.
That's a record, Commissioner.
The lawyers back?
I'm going to be out.